All right, I won't do roll call today because I actually realized there's a little feature on Zoom that I can just pull the roll call from, so I think, I think we'll be okay this evening. Um, this evening, we're going to focus on a couple of big things. One is, I first wanted to provide space for folks to share any thoughts, questions, feedback on the compliance chapter that we discussed um, last, um, last meeting. Um, and see if folks have any questions or, or any feedback on that. Um, because you were presented with that particular chapter for the first time in terms of the text at the last meeting, so want to make sure you all have an opportunity to, to share feedback on, on that chapter, if there is any. Um, and then the second thing we'll do today is we'll focus on the updated strategies, um, which is, um, going to be chapter four, I believe, in, um, the Community Mission Reduction Program. Um, I will share with you, um, when we get to that section, um, where you can find the actual, um, documents in both English and Spanish to start to navigate through what those updated strategies are. Um, updates were made to those strategies based upon feedback we received from you all um, back in, I believe, um, June, July, and August, we were having those discussions. Um, and then, um, and then we also received feedback, we had folks, um, at the California Air Resources Board Review those strategies and also folks, um, uh, that are APCD staff members um, in the various different divisions from compliance to permitting, to incentives, to rule development. Um, we had folks in all those different divisions also review the strategies as well to make sure that there is clarity, to make sure that things are concise, uh, to also make sure that the rules and responsibilities as they are listed um, make sense for the appropriate entities that are there. And also to do kind of a check in, in terms of seeing what kind of resources and capacity that APCDs, um, currently has and where we'll need to be, right? In order to fully support all those strategies you've all, um, mentioned. So I'll share that in, in, in just a second. Um, but before we get into the strategies discussion, just wanted to pause and see if folks had any um, questions, comments, feedback on the chapter that we, um, discussed last time, which was the compliance chapter. What I could do as well as I can put those chapters back in the chat box, um, so that folks can, can take a look at that. I'll, I'll put that in the chat box in just a second. But yeah, I'd love to hear from folks in terms of if there's any, any comments or feedback regarding the compliance, um, chapter.
And Monique, sorry to interrupt, but maybe, um, eh, as folks gather their thoughts, um, were we gonna do announcements? And I'm sorry, I didn't give you a heads up, but I just have a quick announcement, but I don't know if we can, if we want to do it first or we can do it at the end, whatever works.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we could do it right now so that if folks want to gather their thoughts on, on that question, um, gives them a little bit of time, but yeah, I apologize, I'm kind of going off of the kind of regularly scheduled agenda piece, um.
Yeah, no, not at all, I, I should have given you a heads up, that I had a quick announcement.
Yeah, go for it, Domingo.
Sure, and I, I just wanted to share, um, you know, some good news with the group. We have deployed our first AQ mesh, uh, sensor, uh, at the San Isidro monitoring station at the fire station. Um, just a reminder, this, this sensor is called an AQ mesh sensor. This will measure air quality, um, specifically hydrogen, hydrogen sulfide, sulfur dioxide, dioxide, um, total volatile, volatile organic compounds, carbon monoxide and nitrogen dioxide. Some of these chemicals, uh, are released as a result, uh, you know, of, um, those are odor causing chemicals that are released, uh, from the sewage spills of the Tijuana River Valley. So we'll be able to start monitoring those. Uh, so we're very excited and very happy that we've released our, our first sensor and we will be working to release additional sensors throughout the community, including in the Tijuana River Valley itself and also in Imperial Beach. Uh, I will share in the chat, uh, copy of a press release that we, uh, just issued, uh, today. Uh, and I'll say that we've been getting a lot of media attention, so tomorrow we're actually going to be uh, doing some interviews, uh, about this, but I just wanted to share this, uh, great news with everybody. And that was it, thank you.
Awesome, thanks so much for sharing, Domingo. Um, and thanks for sharing that, that link to, to the media release, um, regarding that sensor. So good news and certainly, uh, not stopping there, more to come. Um, and so this is certainly going to be one of many, um, um, in the Tijuana River Valley. Um, yeah, want to see if anyone else has any announcements, uh, before we get started. Okay. All right, so I just want to circle back to the, the kind of the question around the compliance chapter. That's the chapter that we went over in, in a lot of detail in terms of what the Air Pollution Control District is going to do in terms of compliance. And then also, what is the California Air Resources Board going to do in terms of compliance as it relates to the strategies that are listed there? Um, and so, um, I provided a presentation last time, um, as well. And I could also send out the link later again to the, um, once I get it up this evening to the presentation and, and the, um, video recording as well. If you weren't here at the last meeting, you can also catch up. But, um, just want to pause and see if anyone has any kind of feedback or, uh, you know, general comments regarding that chapter. Um, also, I don't want folks to feel that this is the only time that folks can comment on that chapter. Um, it's still very much in draft form. Um, our plan as well is in November, by the November, um, um, CSC meeting to have a full, because I, we've been sharing kind of pieces, chapter by chapter, but have the full SERP, um, in draft form for you all to review as well and provide feedback as well. So you certainly have more time to share, but just checking in, any feedback at this particular moment regarding the compliance chapter? All right, again, um, I just want folks to know as well, if it's easier for folks rather than kind of typing in comments into the Google Doc that I shared with, or the two Google Docs that I shared with you all, um, you can always, um, email or call me, um, and we could schedule, um, a one-on-one conversation to, um, for you to share your comments and feedback as well. So I highly encourage that, I just want to share our doors open, um, for that feedback as well. Um, I'm going to go ahead and transition us to kind of what the bulk of the conversation is going to be about today, um, which is going to be the updated, um, strategies. So I'm going to put in the chat box, if you can click on that, let me know if you have trouble opening, um, any of those documents, um, there. Um, you should see in the, um, link, um, you should see, uh, two documents, they're the same thing, just ones in English and ones in Spanish. Um, and that is just chapter four, which is the strategy section. So if folks are able to, um, open that, I'm also going to share my screen as well, so that, um, so that you all can kind of follow along with us as well. Share here. Great. Can you all see my screen, okay? In terms of seeing, um, kind of two documents side by side? On the right, it should be Spanish, on the left, it should be English?
Yes.
Okay. Great. And I'll be moving things around so that, so that, you know, we can make sure that everyone can see everything, um, as much as possible. You see something in the chat, I'm just going to open that up, okay, great, thank you Jenny. Um, also, feel free throughout the course of this conversation as well to write comments in the chat box, to write directly, um, comments on these documents as well. Um, they're intended for you all to, to mark up, um, as well. So, um, a couple of things I want to highlight about these documents. One is, um, you all provided feedback on the goals for each one of these sections. I have yet to revise the goals based upon what you shared, so you're going to see the goals haven't been revised yet, but, um, it's my intention to do so, I just haven't had an opportunity to do so yet. So the goals are certainly going to be able to be, uh, I, I'm, I'll revise them based upon the input you all gave a couple of months ago, um, during our meeting in person. Um, since this is quite an extensive document, we won't be able to go over each point, line item by line item. So what I did is I highlighted a few things that, um, would be important for us to discuss in more detail, either because it's something maybe that you've all have expressed maybe, um, incredible interest in, or maybe it's something where there wasn't full consensus on something, right? Or maybe it's because, um, some of the metrics, um, need to be further defined by you all as well. So you're going to see, um, that I've highlighted throughout these documents, kind of the where we're gonna, where the bus stops are kind of along the way, where, where we're going to stop and kind of focus our attention um, this evening. Um, that's not to say that we don't want feedback from the other sections, we certainly do, but for the purposes of kind of helping move our conversation along today, we'll focus on those highlighted areas. And, but if there's a particular section that you'd like to focus on, um, that's not highlighted, please let us know and we, we'd happily engage in a conversation in that, um, today. Um, before we get started, I just want to kind of orient people in terms of how to navigate this document because it's, looks a little bit different from the last time that we, um, shared this out. One, you have kind of the strategy, overall strategy listed. Um, one thing that wasn't part of the original document or the, the, um, original draft of the strategies is we didn't have necessarily a timeline listed, um, for the particular strategy. We didn't have metrics, um, um, in here, meaning defining how we're going to like measure, um, success of this particular strategy. And we didn't necessarily have partners, um, spelled out in terms of their each individual role. So that's something that you're going to see a little bit different in this document than the previous document. So there's going to be a bit more detail in terms of metrics, roles, um, and, um, the timeline as well. None of these things are set in stone. If you have other ideas of where things should be in terms of its timing of implementation, um, we certainly welcome that feedback and, um, are able to make those changes, um, as well. So these timelines were just kind of generally put there based upon, um, kind of our general assessment of how something might generally take, um, and what things could maybe be accomplished more in the short term versus mid to long term from our general assessment, but if there's something that is, um, a major priority for, um, the community, we certainly can, can change kind of the setting of that timeline as well. So I just want to really emphasize that, that none of this here is, is set, set in stone. It's really from our best assessment. But again, if there is a community priority that needs to be bumped up even sooner, we can certainly engage in that conversation and, and, and figure out where, you know, where we should best put that timeline, um, as well. Um, before we dive into the document, are there any questions on just generally how to, um, navigate the document? Yeah. All right. Um, all right, so I want to turn our attention first, um, to kind of this first thing that's highlighted here, right above community care. Um, one of the things as we've had, um, uh, Air Pollution Control District staff in other divisions start to review the strategies listed here, um, particularly strategies that involved other divisions, like whether it was developing a new rule, whether it was, um, increasing compliance, right? Um, increasing inspections, um, those types of things. Um, we had folks in those other divisions look at that, but then also began to, to do kind of a, a really high level assessment based upon what, what's currently within APCD's, um, resources and capacity to, um, uh, do the work in the strategies mentioned, um, by you all. And, um, and also, um, what would require additional resources or, and capacity, um, to complete. One of the things we really wanted to be mindful of is not to just remove a strategy because it is not within APCD's current ability. We wanted to be incredibly respectful of what community was sharing, but we want, wanted to do too is have an honest conversation, right? With the CSC, with community members in terms of what are the kind of the things we are going to need to as an organization scale up to? Um, and we will need to, um, also be able to determine, does it mean that we shift, um, our priorities in terms of staff? Where, you know, what staff is doing and, and what they will do in the future? Does it mean that, um, the board should take on and analyze, um, essentially, um, uh, different types of funding models, um, for APCD in order to ensure there's capacity and resources to do this type of work? Does it mean that we're seeking grant funding to increase resources and capacity to, um, be able to do the strategies themselves? Um, does it mean that, um, we look to different technologies? That can maybe do what, what maybe, uh, you know, a few years ago, that was very labor intensive, that can now be done, um, using different technologies, right? Um, and so what you'll find throughout the document is any section that has any sentence that has an asterisk by it in terms of, um, a role and responsibility in terms of the Air Pollution Control District, you will find, uh, that asterisk is basically saying that particular element um, is going to require, um, more resources and capacity than APCD currently has. Um, but that's not to say any of the strategies wouldn't be in some way, to a certain degree, implemented based upon the capacity and resources we do have. Um, they will be, but they're in, um, to realize the full vision of what you've all have, um, helped collectively create, there may be some things that will require that increased capacity, um, as well. So I just wanted to be mindful of that, um, highlight that in the beginning too, as we're navigating this document. Um, and have a conversation with you all in terms of even thinking about, um, prioritization of some of these things um, as it relates to, um, as it relates to the strategies that you've all, um, have co-developed. Um, before we get started and, and diving into the actual strategies themselves, I just want to check in with folks and see if folks have any questions or comments on that. And I apologize if there's hands up, I, I can't see them, so if there's anything you'd like to share, feel free to just jump on in.
And I'm monitoring, Monique, I don't see any hands up, but yeah, if anybody wants to, uh, chime in, please feel free to meet yourselves, you should be able to.
Yeah, I see a question in the chat box, um, but Jenny says, um, about the community care part, I might be ahead of you. Um, that's where we're headed next Jenny, um, how do we fill in the numerical part of the metrics? And about school filtration, what about Nestor? No worries, no worries Jenny, yeah, let's go ahead and dive into it there. Um, so one of the things here is, oh yeah, Maritza.
Si, tengo una pregunta ahorita que estaba leyendo específicamente, uh, Papasan Isidro High School. I don't, it's, it's, uh, up on Otai and, I don't know, probably is not too close, well, it's really close to the, to the freeway, you know, nine oh five.
Yeah, um, so about, and I, I don't know if I caught on all of that, but about including it kind of in this list as well as schools for, for a potential flag program?
Yes, probably, I was thinking, and then, and I don't know what I was thinking before, but now what I see all the schools and I say, okay, Papasan Isidro High School too, because it's, it's in the, in the middle of the, the, the both areas, close to the, well, close, kind of close to the border, but also really close to the nine oh five or the Altay Mesa.
Definitely, and I saw, um, Jenny's comments too about Nestor, and I went ahead and added San Isidro High School and, and Nestor to this, um, as well, not added to both the, the English and, um, Spanish documents. Um, absolutely, yeah, thanks for elevating that. Um, so. Yeah, Stanford.
Hi, um, I don't know the names of the, uh, smaller private schools in San Isidro, but I know we have a couple of them, so it would probably be good to add them as well, not just go with the public ones.
Okay. Let me make sure to add that as a comment. Or actually Domingo, if you were able to, to kind of help with the, the comments, to add to the document, would that be okay?
Yes, yes, definitely.
So also looking at, you know, private institutions too, just make sure that the kids there are protected as well, absolutely. Um, cool. In, in terms of metrics, this may not be the like best or appropriate metrics, but in terms of like, are we looking in terms of metrics like a hundred percent of the schools in San Isidro, Otay Mesa area to have filtration systems, or are we looking at like eighty percent of the schools? Or, or what would that, that metric be? Uh, Head Start as well is a good one, yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Monique, I don't think I'm able to edit the documents, it's not, Elise is not letting me.
Oh, okay, let me make sure to fix that really fast. One second.
And I'm not, I'm seeing your edits on, on your screen, but I'm not seeing them on the.
They're not coming up on, okay, let, let me fix that really fast. Yeah, it shows, actually Domingo, I'm going to add you. If Domingo, if you would just be able to add a comment rather than an edit, just so that, just to make it easier on the, on the backend, yeah.
Okay, here we go, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Let me just pull the comment box back up, so I know people were typing in there. Um, yeah, I think also Head Start for sure, right? Um, would be really good for this program, um, as well. Um, and I'd have to check into, it, it probably would fall under, because I know that like technically like schools fall under that, um, and it should fall under that category as well in terms of AB six seventeen money that could go towards it. Um, again, I'm not sure if this is appropriate metric, like, is the, is the, to say we're successful in one to three years, is it like we're hitting, or maybe it's, it's broken up, like, maybe, you know, in two years, we're at, you know, uh, thirty percent of the schools and that, you know, three years we're at, wha- whatever it is. But love to hear from folks in terms of, of metrics, which, which should that look like? And also if folks want, want time to think of that, that's, that's okay too. Um, the other thing too in terms of metrics is, um, zero emission buses, um, for the San Isidro School District. Um, so Jenny's like a hundred percent of schools, okay? And this includes the, kind of the Head Start and all of that. Um, in terms of zero emission buses, and this could be the, the same, the same percentage, but in terms of a metric, you know, um, what are we looking for in terms of that transition to like a zero emissions fleet? Which for zero emission buses, it might be a slightly longer timeline, it may not be like within the one to three win, three year window. Um, but is that something we're also looking at a hundred percent as well? Within a particular timeframe?
And just to give folks, uh, a little bit of, of, um, information, just to help with the perspective on, on this particular one, with some of the school bus projects that we fund, it takes approximately one and a half to two years to order the, the buses and get them, uh, operating. So, so that's why also Monique was referring to maybe a longer timeframe for this particular goal. And that's obviously provided that, you know, the funding is, is there, so, um, so just something to consider. And I see a, a comment from Jenny or a question, uh, how many buses does San Isidro have? Um, so that would be something that I guess we could, um, uh, work with the school district to find out.
Yeah, Domingo, would you be able to write a comment in terms of, like, adding an action here is kind of doing an assessment of how, how many buses they have and, and also, um, what infrastructure they might need for that, that transition as well? Um, maybe the school has done that assessment already. Um, uh, but just so that we know like how much we're talking about. Because that might also dictate the timeline too. Um, in terms of, and we might want to put a special note there in terms of what might kind of dictate the timeline, if it's a hundred buses, I, I don't think it's a hundred, but if it's a hundred, right? That's a much longer timeline rather if it's like four or five.
Correct.
Monique, talking about the buses, it came to my mind, it's, okay, most of the buses that are from school, it's, um, driving around here is the San Isidro School District, but also there's some buses from Sweetwater District, not exactly from San Isidro High School, probably, there were ones. Well, sometimes when they're going to schools close here, like a Southwest or, or Montgomery or something like that, to, to more to sports, but also the, the, for this, the special ed classes, they still, or most of them have, uh, buses and also they're, because I, I was seeing some not, not a lot, there's a few from Chula Vista School District, because they're having a speci- specific, special thing and they, they have to take that, uh, give it transportation. And I don't know exactly how many buses, uh, from all those other two districts.
Yeah, so.
Driving around here, and that, that just came to my mind, I don't know, it's just important, really important and that, but.
Yeah, absolutely, I would say maybe even adding, right? The Sweetwater School District, and you said there was another one, which, what was it?
Uh, Chula Vista.
Chula Vista School District, um, which would, which would certainly qualify for AB six seventeen funds as well. Um, but maybe just even listing it, um, um, here would, would be great. And I see in the chat box, um, Kathy has some intel here, saying that the San Isidro School District currently has a grant now for four zero emission school buses, um, through the Air Pollution Control District.
That's great, just great, yeah. And, and now, and now the, that, that some, uh, put, uh, Nicolov Elementary, uh, the Nicolov is from South Bay District, it's another, another district.
Yeah. Awesome, yeah, um, so maybe Domingo, right, adding a comment here to add both the Chula Vista and Sweetwater School District of like intentionally, um, um, working towards, you know, transitioning their fleet as well. And, uh, I saw, uh, Nicholas, yeah, I saw your hand up earlier.
Yeah, I, I, I was just going to comment on exactly what Maritza mentioned earlier. So like Nicolov Elementary, South Bay Union School District, so making sure that, I, I guess all the districts that touch San Isidro are included in, in whatever this, this metric calls for.
So maybe even just kind of saying like any adjacent school districts, just to keep it simple and making sure we don't leave anybody out, but like any adjacent school districts to, to San Isidro, Otay Mesa, um, should also be prioritized, right, for, for the zero emission buses, um, as well.
Yes, because that's, that's include, uh, that cover all these three, just, uh, district that we mentioned, uh, Chula Vista, because there's a area upstairs in, close to Otay Mesa, or that by the main street or those areas, as Chula Vista District School and. It's Chula Vista District School and also right here for Sa- Southwest High School or or the San Isidro is the Sweetwater and then Nicolov, and I don't know, it's another closest school on the South Bay too.
Okay, that's that's perfect, and that's really, really great um information to make sure that we include in this. Um, because when also, just to let you know, like when also something is written into the Community Emission Reduction Program, the SERP, it also then becomes kind of a community, becomes considered a community, um what's the terminology Kathy, that I'm I'm thinking of right now?
Community approved?
Community priority project or?
Community approved project?
A community identified project.
With enough of us here, we would get to the right word. A community identified project then then um makes it much easier to access certain funding um than if it weren't as part of like the official SERP, so I think um I really like um you all highlighting this and then also Nicholas's um, you know, suggestion in terms of kind of using the term like adjacent or something like that to make sure that it's including. Uh, we're not, we're not accidentally leaving out a particular um entity in that, so. Um, cool, so I'm gonna go ahead and transition us to the next, to the next highlighted piece. Um, this here is more just as um, and you know, um I'm certainly welcome feedback and comments, but just more as like sharing APCD's commitment to to really doing the work we can do to start looking for um and implementing in the future um funding models that are more uh sustainable um to co- to be able to have the appropriate staffing and resources to do the work that is um to the fullest extent that is listed in the SERP itself. And so this is really like an internal APCD action item um for for internal staff to do, certainly um we welcome um uh ideas and feedback from from community and various stakeholders and government agencies in terms of this, but this is really kind of um uh providing guidance and direction to APCD to make it a priority to really look for that sustain- sustainable funding piece, to be able to do um the work in the SERP and do um uh work, intentional work in partnership with with communities facing environmental injustices as well. So that's what this kind of um this this uh section is talking about is, hey, how are we gonna change things operationally in order for that for that sustainability to happen um as well? Um, and then um the next thing uh towards the bottom is um specifically talking about increasing APCD's presence um at the international border. Um, and one of the things here is intentionally being more present um in the community beyond um, you know, CSC meetings, um but also thinking like how, you know, having metrics in terms of how many events are we tabling a year, right? Um, how many workshops are we doing um in the community? Um, you know, how are we being intentional in terms of using place-based targeted social media to raise awareness about different different issues, right? Um, to raise awareness about the compliance hotline that folks can call, right, if there's an issue that they're experiencing, so um, I've highlighted here, um and also we do wanna kind of check in with our capacity current and then also um uh aspirational capacity as well. But highlighted here too in terms of thinking about um APCD's presence in the community. How would folks, and of course, we could change this bullet point too, but how would folks want that to look like? And and how often um would, you know, should that be in order to um have better relationship, have better communication with the with the community um as well, but love to hear from folks regarding um any of these, any of these points that I've mentioned here, um either kind of the operational side of things at APCD or um just the intentional engagement and outreach with folks who live in the San Isidro, Otay Mesa. Also, these elements may be too formulaic, right, there may be other ways to reach people. Um, so maybe we need to be, wanna be a little bit more broad, I'm certainly open to that as well, but yeah, love to hear from folks in terms of uh frequency and the types of engagement that that we should be making a commitment to as as part um of this process. Domingo, anything else you'd like to add to that in terms of um context?
Um, I mean, I think I think you covered it well, I don't, can't think of anything else at the moment.
Yeah. Awesome. Um, one thing I did not mention, but I know that we have several um uh public agency partners here. Um, we have folks from the California, California Air Resources Board, we have folks from Caltrans. I think I saw Zach earlier from Sandag, I think I saw Shelby earlier from the city of San Diego. Um, one of the things that we would love to do as well is is meet, um you know, one-on-one actually with each of your your um respective agencies um and organizations um to go over this as well, because you'll notice that in the document, there are and I'll just use this as an example, there are some elements that we've written in here that um that we would like it, you know, and that folks have shared with like some, an ongoing relationship or partnership um or commitment. Um, and so, and we would love to review that um one-on-one with you all to make sure that what's listed in the document itself is reflective of of also your own capacity, um and ability to commit to those to those um things as well. So if you're from a public agency, from the city, um one thing we'd love for you to do is kind of take this document, highlight where it specifically specifically calls out your um the entity uh that you represent um and have a conversation with with staff first within your organization, and then we love to connect one-on-one with you all um to go over these strategies list as well, um and so that we make sure that whatever we're putting, you know, pen to paper. Um, it's it's a solid, you know, kind of commitment and it's within um the ability and um of of your of your organization um to do as well. Um, so I just wanted to uplift that um as well. Um, thank you Shelby, um, I also, I saw I see Edma's hand, um Edma? Oops, Edma, I think you're on mute. Thank you so much, Edma, I think that's really good, I I included it as a note to include here is is in the metric is to have the intentional school engagement be part of that metric as well. Um, how many schools are being reached out to, how, you know, how many parents, you know, those types of metrics? Um, so I think that's an incredible suggestion, thank you so much for 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 sharing that. Um, Maritza, I saw you come off mute for for a second.
Yes, no, I wa- I was thinking, uh, I wa- I just going to say, yeah, that's that's a good idea, and I don't know, there's a difference way to after probably talk with the principals or there's the the ways to contact with, engage with the parents, is the coffee with the principals or on other meetings with the with the parents that could be, or or probably a forum to all the community, but I don't know, it's probably to to try to reach for a few schools together, it's probably getting, try to get it in together, it's better. Um, well, we can get be- better attention if we go to like a community forum in general, like uh get to the schools in in specifics.
Yeah, so if it's either, you know, an event happening at the school, I'm just thinking at my kid's school, they're gonna have a Dia de los Muertos event, or if it's the PTA, or if it's all the kids take a postcard home that has, you know, information of who to call, right? Um, if they encounter an air quality issue, so there's a lot of uh different, different ways to kind of engage the school um there and but just maybe even writing here, just um some examples, but not tying this to specific things, right, cuz there might be other things that opportunities that emerge within the schools as well, but being intentional of of ensuring that part of that outreach strategy includes the schools themselves. Yeah, it's really, really good. Um, thank you, thank you for bringing that up, Edma, and and for your additional comments, Maritza. Right, so um a couple of things I wanted to highlight next is um scroll on this site here too. Um, again, is, actually, I'm gonna take the highlight off here. Um. Um, is highlighting some things that would require some additional resources. Um, this is in relationship to strategy for community care, reduce residential exposure to air pollution. Um. And sp- and this is specifically talking about um making sure that future community plan updates um aren't putting housing right next to freeways or industry, making sure that there's buffer areas um and those types of um things, um but then also just kind of supporting planning permitting processes in general that encourage a separation of of uh land uses, again, not putting homes right up against a freeway, not putting um you know, uh warehouses right next to homes and so forth, making sure that there's buffer areas as well. Um, one of the things is that um APCD would love to do at this moment, we just do not have a person at the district who's able to do that is um conduct um SEQA analysis, which is um the California Environmental Quality um Act that provides an opportunity for um to notify the community about a projects that's happening, but also provides opportunity for both the public and also public agencies to provide um comments um in how um to share their concerns or what they'd like the project to do uh maybe differently to protect public health amongst a lot of other things. Um, at the moment, we don't have someone who is able to do that level of analysis. It's something that we certainly would want to work towards, um and that's why there's an asterisk right there um for that particular element. Um, for this, for this first element though here um for selective projects that would really impact um um, you know, uh a good handful of folks. Um, certainly APCD could provide some general comment letters, um um making general statements in terms of um, you know, what the project could potentially impact in terms of air quality um and health in general, but it wouldn't necessarily be to the fullest level of having someone do kind of that full kind of um SEQA analysis um at this point, so it's really a more scaled back version uh from the district side of thing in in terms of getting involved in these future um planning discussions um as well. Um, and so uh at at a at a minimum, we certainly want to do our due diligence and provide the CSC space to invite folks who are proposing projects or the city or whomever that would have the jurisdiction of approving a particular project or um a plan, come and forget um and have the venue of the CSC, so the CSC members can provide and community can provide um feedback and could be in the know about it, um but it would really require us really um coordinating in this case with the city, and we should probably add the county here as too, um cuz there are also things happening um in county jurisdiction as well, but really would require us um really leaning on both the city and the county to inform us of projects that may be coming down the pipeline that um may potentially impact um the communities of San Isidro and Otay Mesa. So wanted to uplift this as, yes, this is certainly an important strategy. Initially though, um is gonna require kind of a more scaled back version than than kind of the the fullest version of this, and we wanna work up to and have a plan of how we can have the resources and staff capacity to be um more actively involved in the review of these kind of plans and permits and and projects to be able to comment upon them, um but at the moment, we'll have to be pretty selective just based upon dr- current like staff capacity and all. But love to hear from folks and and also maybe Kathy, if you wanna maybe touch a little bit more on that, um given that this would be, you know, primarily um the planning team um at APCD that would be um kind of holding this space, if you wanna provide a little bit more background on that.
Um, can you tell me that question again, Monique?
Yeah.
Sorry, I cut the last half of it.
No, no, no worries, no worries, so um really just wanted to see if there is anything else you wanted to add in terms of clarity. Um, in terms of, you know, ensuring that, you know, to the fullest scale of this implementation of the strategy would be like APCD has an in-house SEQA review person, right? Um, that could do those that and and could keep track every single project and everything that's going on in the community, at right now, we just don't have that person, we don't have the capacity. So maybe if you wanna elaborate more on what could APCD current, like based upon current capacity, what would be the kind of the scale of this kind of implementation of of this particular strategy?
Gotcha, sorry, I was spaced out there for a minute. Um, that right now, our capacity is to write letters about projects that are elevated by the community, for example, or that we know are gonna have significant air quality impacts. Um, we work with those applicants and project uh folks to talk about the air quality impacts of those in as part of the SEQA process. Um, so already we focus on the AB six seventeen communities to pay special attention there, but you're right, ideally, or even to expand um, on that to be more proactive than reactive, we need additional resources to, to do that.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you Kathy. Um, I feel like you've rounded the edges of what I was trying to share, so. Um, yeah, I'd love to hear from folks, um, if there's any questions, um, concerns, um, you know, just general feedback in regards to that, cause one of the things that we really want to be mindful of is, is, we certainly want to be mindful of, um, of, of sharing honestly, kind of what our current capacity is. Not to say no to a strategy, but to think creatively and be like, okay, well, what can we do today? Right? Based upon what we have, um, and we certainly can do, do a lot actually today, but in the ideal sense, in the fullest implementation of the strategy certainly is, you know, necessar- you know, more, more capacity is necessary as well, so. Um, love to, love to hear from folks if there's any, if there's any reflections on, on this particular item. Nicolas.
Hey, Monique, um, so, uh, I, and I, I don't know if this is appropriate to, to kind of bring up, but, you know, I know in some parts of California, there's like efforts to put like moratoriums on any new construction of warehouses in, in impacted communities. And so, I mean, this section is talking about like monitoring projects, warehouses close to where people or residents live. I don't know if it can be like a possible strategy to say, hey, you know, city of San Diego, can we put a moratorium for a, on, on the new construction of new warehouses in Otaimeza, until we can do a study or, or, I don't know, have some kind of pause to what seems like, I, I mean, they're sprouting up like weeds in, in Otaimeza. I mean, every time I drive down there, there's a new warehouse, and so, I, I, I don't know if that's included already, but, um, just, just kind of wanted to put that forward as a potential addition, maybe.
Yeah, no, thanks for bringing that up. I think that could potentially fall under, um, and maybe if Domingo, if you could find the page below, but under the heavy duty, um, uh, vehicle strategy around where it talks about, that section where it talks about, um, things like the indirect source rule, um, as well, it could maybe be added within that section or some section with heavy duty vehicles. Um, and it, I think it would be considered in terms of, um, within the SERP, it would be considered like a CSC, um, advocacy item. So if you see the type, it would be something that, that the, the CSC itself would be, um, uh, advocating for in this sense, cause I, I, I don't think necessarily that, um, again, we could certainly make that ask, right, when we engage with Shelby and Keith and others on our team, like, um, I don't think it'd be able to be, made a clear commitment from the city as part of this document, but it could certainly be an action item that the CSC specifically advocates for that particular, um, action item. Does that, does that make sense?
And, and if I may add, um, y- you're, you're correct, when against specifically because those types of land use decisions go through their own, you know, planning process and, and, um, approval process by city council. So, you know, it, it would definitely be something that we would note here, uh, at the advocacy level, for sure.
And, and Nicolas, would you be able to maybe send us, um, maybe a draft sentence to consider to integrate, like, for that moratorium, um, as well, and then we could share that back out with folks at the next meeting, um, as well, to get more feedback and input.
Sure thing. Yeah, I, I can, I can email it to you, Domingo.
Perfect, thank you. Um, yeah, that's, that's great feedback. I'm gonna go ahead and move us along as well. Okay. Again, here's another one where we do have an asterisk, um, as well. Um, this is in relation to, um, kind of, um, ensuring, and it's similar to the one above, in terms of ensuring that there's buffer, um, areas, um, near, near communities and specifically sensitive populations like children in schools, parks, senior centers, those types of things, um, as well. And again, just kind of, I wanted to highlight here in terms of, and again, it's just the asterisk, um, it's just the sentence with the asterisk, um, um, behind it that applies to additional resources needed. This, the first sentence is given with, is, is something that APCD can commit to within its existing resources, so it's just the sentence with the, with the asterisk itself, um, after it. Um, so it's very similar to the one we just discussed, um, as well. But again, we, we certainly want to be, um, really upfront, right? Um, in terms of the realities of APC, APC capacity, but also say, but we're not saying no to a strategy, we're like, okay, how do we think creatively within, within the, the current, um, structure? Um, okay, just kind of scrolling down to, okay, page seven, let me scroll down here too. So we're getting into the conversation around passenger vehicles. Um, this is specifically around, um, incentives and incentive programs. Um, you know, the, we, we are required to, I see Kathy, she came off, she, I think she's gonna have some things to say in terms of, of what this looks like here. Um, go ahead, I'll let you go.
I just, I just wanted to make sure I was paying attention for this part. I want to hear what the community has to say.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so the way in which the, the community emission reduction, um, program or the SERP, um, is structured, is that every strategy and action item should have a set of metrics, right? And metrics are things, again, that we can use to measure, verify to say, hey, we've accomplished a particular goal or strategy, right? Um, again, this may not be the best way, best type of metrics to use, and so certainly open to what that looks like. Um, but I tried to in the simplest form, as, as when it came to incentives is like, should we have, um, kind of a number, like at the end of year five, we, um, you know, provided X amount of rebates, right, for vehicle rebates? And I'll give you an example, um, at Portside, they have the, the, the air filtration, the home air, air filtration and air monitors. So in their SERP, they had a metric of, um, by end of year five, I think, or, or whenever, uh, by the end of the program that they would have, um, um, given out a thousand air, air filters and air monitors. So that was, when, once they've reached that, they could say, okay, we've accomplished this particular, um, goal, right? Um, and so I tried to in the same way, do that with these three items that folks specifically had mentioned in previous conversations as being important, um, elements, um, and things that should be incentivized. Um, um, you know, and, and really kind of put, um, blanks really right now as to what, what, and also certainly want to defer to Kathy, who has a lot of experience in terms of what it actually takes, right, per unit generally, right, to do one of these things? But also check in with you all too of where those kind of metrics should be, um, as well. So, maybe, maybe I want to open it up to community first Kathy, and then you could also, based upon what we hear back from folks, can also, um, provide more context. But I'd love to hear from folks in terms of, you know, vehicle rebate offered, cargo bikes, EV chargers installed, um, if there's certain kind of numbers or different types of metrics in mind that folks are thinking of. Stanford.
Hey, um, so, of course, I'm gonna mention solar. And then, um, I know there's incentives for heat, heat, um, sorry, heat pump water heaters, so it will take a, basically take away your gas power water heater and replace it with an electrical heat pump water heater, which is not only high efficiency, but you don't have all the, you know, uh, you're not burning gas, so a lot less pollution for your home and your surroundings, of course.
Um, yeah, so, so this is, what you're talking about is almost kind of this like, um, what the county talks about is in terms of decarbonization, right, within one's home, right? Um, I love that idea. I know this section here is specifically within passenger vehicles, but I think it would make sense to add something to maybe community care in terms of within homes that maybe includes these, you know, what, what the county calls decarbonization efforts, and, but it could also include things like air filtration system, so like, anything kind of healthy home space is kind of a term that EHC uses, right? We could have like a healthy homes, um, area in, in the community care section, which I think this would, would fit, um, into. Yeah, but great idea. Any other comments, feedback on this? Irma? And do folks have preferences in terms of, or ideas in terms of metrics? Kathy, go for it.
Can I throw one out?
Yeah.
Um, I'm wondering if we could look at, um, maybe rather than a set number of rebates, but have like a percentage of the total rebates that the district does have, uh, like a, an appropriate percentage for Otaimeza, San Isidro, um, so that we know that we're always giving at least the, like, population percentage of, of incentives into that community.
Yeah, what are folks' thoughts on that? See a thumbs up from Stanford? Yeah. And certainly open to, to hearing from folks kind of what, what seems fair, right, in terms of that percentage? Um, you know, also, you know, keeping in mind too, right, there's other, other, you know, communities that are facing similar issues too, but may not be part of, um, the official kind of AB six seventeen program, um, itself. Um, but certainly, certainly open to, to hearing from folks what, what maybe that should look like, cause actually this also kind of gets at a point, I think Alejandro was making at the last meeting, when, um, there was that presentation in terms of, um, where the incentives were being proposed, right? Um, or where the incent, where folks had applied for the incentives in terms of, specifically it was around kind of the, the school buses, and I think a comment was made around making sure that a greater percentage, there wasn't a percentage set, but, you know, is specifically for, for, um, San Isidro and Otaimeza. Yeah, love to hear folks' thoughts on that. Um, where, where, where are folks with that? And it's kind of a big thing to kind of chew on, so, um, so let's circle, let's circle back on that too at our next meeting, I think, um, just to, just to give you all more time to, to think about that. Um, yeah, and also gave me some more time too, to think about that.
Me too.
Yeah. Awesome, all right. Nicolas.
Uh, ju- just to kind of chime in, um, Monique, you know, I think, uh, we have the, the two AB six one seven communities, and, in theory, these are the most impacted communities in the county, so it makes sense for them to have a, a, a larger proportion of, of the incentive funds. Um, where that line is, I, I can't help with that. Um, but I, I, it does make sense to me for that to be, for those communities to be prioritized when it comes to incentive dollars.
Absolutely, um. Yeah, and, you know, maybe, maybe it's not like, um, a hard and fast number or percentage, so to speak, but maybe it's more the language of prioritize, I, I don't know exactly, um, or maybe we don't want it that squishy either, right? Cause that might provide a lot of flexibilities, like, well, we prioritize them, but then we didn't get applications from there, you, so, so I wanna, I don't know, I have to think about all the potential, um, possibilities there, but Domingo, yeah.
Yeah, no, just quickly, um, just for, for, for everyone's benefit, and Kathy can correct me if, if I'm wrong, but, uh, so far, I think we're, we've been able to fund every, every qualifying project, um, from the communities that, you know, has come, uh, to us for funding, so in that way, you know, we're, we're still fortunate, but we're still looking for additional projects, right? Because we're in a, in a good position in terms of funding for incentive projects right now, so, um, if anybody knows of any interested, uh, you know, parties that want to, um, access incentive funding for, for projects, definitely connect them with us.
Yeah.
Absolutely agree, Domingo, thanks.
Yeah. So I'm gonna mention something that I know that other districts I either have implemented or in the process of exploring, and Kathy's probably gonna not like me very much for this. But here's something to also explore, like, the, the concept of participatory budgeting as well. Um, some districts are using a certain percentage of that funding, um, where the, the CSC and like the AB six seventeen communities, um, are able to um, have more direct, um, and again, I don't know how these programs are working, and perhaps Melinda and, um, Liliana can share more, um, of how that's working in other places in the state, but, um, there could be an opportunity to explore such a process. Um, we don't have to have it fully fleshed out. Um, but we could certainly, you know, as part of this explorer, what would that mean and look like and, you know, and then also, what would that mean and look like operationally and administratively on, on APCD's end as well, but I just wanted to uplift that because I know just generally that that's something that's either ha- is being implemented or being explored in other districts as it relates to, to AB six seventeen funding.
And, and we actually had an opportunity to do that with Portside Kathy and, and team, um, you know,
Okay, come in.
Provided a, a presentation and, 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 you know, we did, we went through that exercise with the Portside community, um, developed the list of the projects that were priority for them. Um, and I even, I think that we even selected like certain, like amounts for each, uh, type of, of project, if I remember correctly, but it was, it was an exercise that I remember going through with Portside some time ago, I want to say over, maybe even over a year ago.
Yeah, a couple of years now, I think that we had set priorities, cause we were meeting in person. Um, so, it was a while ago. Um, but yes, I think that would be a useful exercise, um, at, to set priorities. I don't know very much about, um, participatory budgeting, I'd be interested to, to hear more about what that looks like, um, and see if that's something that we could, um, look out for the incentive funding. I'm gonna stay non-committal right now, cause I don't know enough about it.
Um, yeah, and maybe it's, um, I think I pinned myself here. Um, maybe, you know, I'd love to hear from, from CSC members and all, ma- maybe what I'll do is, cause I don't, I don't think I define participatory budgeting, I just use the phrase. Um, so, um, I could define it a little bit, I, I apologize, my son literally woke up from a two-hour nap right now. So, he's right here, and it's just me at home, me and him alone at home today, so, um, Liliana, do you want to speak to, to that, you know, kind of maybe define participatory budgeting for folks, um, in the room, or, sorry, I'm putting on this one, maybe I could help define it, but maybe if you, um, explain maybe how, how that's looking in other parts of the state?
Actually, yeah, I, I just want to highlight that in the, um, the final draft, um, Blueprint two point oh, we have a section on participatory budgeting, and it's something that, um, we're very much looking forward to seeing in all CSCs, um, as they're, um, thinking about how to allocate their, um, incentive fund, so I'm gonna drop a link in the chat for that.
Awesome, thank you so much, Liliana, and maybe it would be helpful if we could, I'm also growing this. if we could, I'm also growing this agenda really big. Maybe if we could have like a five minute or something like high level presentation from CARB in terms of what it says in the, the blueprint document around participatory budgeting, just to introduce the concept to folks here, um. And, um, yeah.
Sure. And one thing I just want to mention about the, the draft blueprint, it's not final. Um, and, um, we actually just have, um, it's open for public comment and our board will, um, consider it for adoption on October twenty sixth. So if there's some time to, to give that presentation before then, it'd be extra helpful. And if not, then, I mean, um, it'd be, it'd still be great to give that presentation. Or just a five minute overview.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Liliana. That's really, really helpful. Um, I'm actually going to turn it over to Domingo, um, to take, um, over in the next few sections, well, as I get custom situated. And then, um, and then I'll be back on screen in, in just a second, but I'm still listening. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to you, Domingo.
Thank you, Monique. And I will go ahead and share my screen now so that folks can see uh, on, follow along on my screen. Um, give me just one second here. As I navigate my screens, um. Can you all see the two documents? On your screen, can I get a confirmation from anybody that you're looking at the right screen? I have so many windows open.
I can see it. Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. So, um, right now we're, uh, let me get caught up on the Spanish uh, version here. We are on page number seven of the English version is Passenger Vehicle Strategy Number Two. Um, so it's page eight on the Spanish, um. All right. So, um, I think we are ready to transition on to the next one, if I'm, if I'm following correctly, um. So when we're looking at metrics and here's, um, you know, for, for passenger vehicles. Um, one of the things that we're, that we're highlighting here is reducing idling of passenger vehicles through improving circulation and efficiencies to have measurable PM two point five and NOx emission reductions of X percentage from passenger vehicles. So this is specifically related to, um, uh, improving transportation circulation in San Lucero and reducing, uh, emissions from passenger vehicles. So, um, looking at, at this particular strategy and, and, uh, at this metric, um. I think, I think th- this one in particular is a little bit tricky because, um, I'm not sure that we have a, a, a defined baseline for PM two point five and NOx emissions coming specifically from passenger vehicles. Um, but I think that, uh, you know, we can look at perhaps the emissions inventory and see if we have any numbers there that we can pull from to use as a, as a baseline. And then in future iterations, we can see, uh, what those reductions look like to call out a, a number specifically, but in terms of, of percentages, I don't know if, if there are any ideas to, you know, get a good, a good sense of what sort of expectations might be, um, out there from folks. Uh, I don't know if anybody has any particular comments on this. And I know this, this gets actually a kind of technical, so this might, uh, require a little bit more um, guidance, um, from our technical folks, um, uh, from our end and, and perhaps from CARB as well. So, um, again, this is, this is probably too much to just try to figure out, uh, right now, but um, this is the, i- if there's another metric that anybody want, would like to call out as something that you're thinking about uh, for this particular strategy, um. Also feel free to provide your comments and don't feel obligated to just have everything out here right now. Right now is a good time for us to have a discussion around this. But these documents are available to you to, uh, provide comments also, um, later on. I, I think I saw comments from, uh, from Jose who was asking about, you know, deadline to provide comments, uh, on this. And if they could provide comments directly on the document, then the answer is yes. You can definitely provide, uh, documents directly on the comment on the document. Um, I guess I'll defer to Monique as far as the deadline to do that, because we have to finalize the, the, uh, draft. Um, but yes, you can definitely provide comments directly here.
I would stay ideally, um, it would be by the end of October. Um, uh, first week of November. Um, the reason being is because we would like to have um, those comments integrated into the draft that we're going to share, like the, the full draft that we're going to share um, at the CSC meeting in November. So, and it does take some time for us to want to integrate those comments, but also get the document translated as well. And so we'd certainly want to, to build in time, um, for that.
All right. And so if there aren't any, any comments on this one in particular, right now we can go to our next. Our next strategy that we wanted to highlight, and that's under, um, the Heavy Duty Vehicles, uh, Strategy Number Four. And so, uh, for this particular strategy would be supporting activities and partnerships that bring funding to the international border communities to advance infrastructure technologies and zero emission heavy duty vehicles. So this one is very important one because, uh, a, a big component of the, um, emission impacts in the community are coming from, uh, from this type of source, right? From, from heavy duty vehicles. And so when looking at this strategy, um, uh, you know, we're looking at metrics here to, um, to measure our success. And, you know, we're looking at establishment of programs to, for toll discounts for zero emission, uh, trucks as a way to incentivize the use of zero emission trucks. Uh, and also again, looking for those goals to, um, transition zero emission heavy, uh, to transition to zero emission heavy duty trucks. Um, by utilizing, uh, incentive funding. Um, and also we have, we're looking at, um, at potential amounts of new funding secured and, uh, deployed to advance the zero emission, uh, trucks and infrastructure. And again, this funding doesn't necessarily have to be exclusively AB six one seven funding. Um, you know, we can, we can, uh, collaborate with other, uh, entities. Um, or, or even through grants at the state and, and federal level that, uh, could fund these types of projects. So that we're not just limited to looking at results only from the AB six one seven fund, um, in general, but I don't know if there are any thoughts from folks on, on these metrics. Or anything else or anything different that you would want to see, uh, to measure, uh, success for this particular strategy. All right, uh, Jose, you have your hand up.
Yes, I think for this, um, action, um, and also for the previous one, uh, we're going to be providing more like more details, uh, comments. Um, some like especially on the roles, like who does what for each agency. And also on the toll discounts, that's something that we have to, have to bring up to, to the team that's working on, uh, Oti Mesa, you can see if, um, that's actually doable, but we're also thinking about other incentives. So we'll, we'll make sure to include those as well.
Great. Sounds good. Any, any other comments or questions or suggestions from any other, uh, members? All right. I know it's, uh, it's a lot, uh, of information and, and a lot of, uh, you know, very diverse topics too. So it's, it's, it's tough, but it's also good that we're having the dialogues of folks can go back and, and just, you know, think about it. Um, and always come back to the document and make any question, you know, suggestions, uh, questions, et cetera, that you might have that, uh, come up, uh, later on. Um. So here, um, I made this, uh, note or a comment about, um, uh, including the advocacy language, uh, for, to address land uses that can increase impacts from indirect sources such as warehouses. Uh, and I just noted that Nick, uh, would, uh, provide some suggested language. Um, a- as we talked about in, in one of the previous, uh, strategies. So this, this particular strategy talks about, um, developing and advocating for rules, um, or other strategies that reduce emissions from indirect sources. And so, um, the district right now, uh, is currently working on, uh, potential, um, indirect source rule. Uh, we have a, a working group that we're engaging with to, um, receive input from different parties, from members of the public, from industry, from organizations, et cetera. So it's a cross, uh, cross sector, uh, working group. And we're hoping to, um, to develop, uh, you know, potential, uh, both regulatory and non-regulatory strategies that can be incorporated into, into a measure that, that, that the district could, um, could enforce. Um, so this, this is what you see, uh, here in this particular strategy. Um, and I don't know if there are any, any initial thoughts or, or comments on that. Um, and then also as we look at the metrics, one that we highlighted here, um, is to, uh, through the implementation of an indirect source rule and other enforceable indirect source control strategies reduce NOx by, you know, X tons per year. Again, looking at those goals of how, uh, the amounts of, of pollutants that we would like to see uh, reduced, uh, in the community. Um. I don't know if there are any, any sort of questions or comments.
Domingo, create a little bit more, um, context to that particular one.
Absolutely.
Um, and, and that we want to specifically work with our, um, rule development team who's done kind of a high level um, analysis of what the possibility is or potential is and in terms of, um, reduction of that particular, um, you know, NOx pollu- pollutant. Um, so we don't want to just put like an arbitrary number, but we also want to base it on what kind of that preliminary analysis is, if there were to be a rule for, let's say warehouses that are, um, a hundred thousand square feet or fifty thousand square feet, whatever, whatever that kind of line or, or parameters that, that folks would want to set. Um, and so, um, I, I'll be circling back with them to kind of get a better understanding of what that potential number can be like based upon i- in reality, right? Not just kind of, we want X amount of NOx reduced from this industry.
Right.
But like if a rule were to be implemented, where would it be? And if a rule isn't implemented, can we still achieve that level of emission reduction, right? That's meaningful for the community, um, through other measures, um, as well. Um, so again, there's kind of a placeholder there to just be able to get that better, more grounded, um, data from the rule development team that's doing that kind of that high level, um, analysis, um. Kathy, I hope you're not having dinner right now, but is there anything else that you'd like to add to that one? Because that's, I think, one that you had a comment on, um, uh, previously.
Sorry, I, I couldn't find the right button to unmute. Um. You'd tell it's been a long day. Um, yes, we're working on seeing if we can refine those numbers so we could figure out what an appropriate goal for, um, for the international border community would look like. Um, but we would, of course, be interested in input from, from all of you about what, what makes sense for that. And I'll take this opportunity to put in a plug to say we've created a working group to talk about the indoor store strategies that we're working on. And there's information available on our website if any of you would like to participate in that working group. So.
And Kathy, can you put that link, um?
I will do that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Right. Thank you both, Kathy and Monique for, for those comments and, and clarification. So we'll, um, we'll let Kathy put the, the link on the, on the chat. And if anybody's interested in, in being part of those conversations more directly, definitely feel free to check that out. Um, and so this will be similar to that other strategy that I was mentioning that we could take a look at what a good baseline would be so that we can have a good idea of, you know, what would be, uh, uh, a good, uh, goal for us there as a, as a metric of success. And so we can go to the next, uh, strategy here, uh, Heavy Duty Vehicle Strategy Number Eight. And this one, uh, talks about increasing the number of inspections at the CH, CHP facility, uh, at Oti Mesa. Uh, this obviously with the goal of, of making sure that the compliance is there from, uh, the different, um, the heavy duty truck so that we can make sure that we're maximizing our emission reduction, uh, opportunities. Um, and so part of the, of the strategy here, um, as Monique had alluded to before, um, a number of strategies will be contingent upon, you know, the funding. We obviously need uh, the resources to implement a lot of these, uh, strategies. So part of the actions that, that uh, we want to take as part of the strategy is to identify those funding opportunities, um, to increase, uh, compliance, um, uh, capacity for mobile source inspections. So whether that's, um, you know, working with CARB as a partner, uh, or identifying new sustainable funding models, uh, fees, et cetera. Um, that will be an important strategy for us to be able to carry, carry this work out. Um. You know, exploring opportunities, uh, for CARB to conduct, uh, mobile source inspections, uh, in Oti Mesa as well right now. Uh, we have a memorandum of understanding with CARB where, uh, APCD, um, is conducting, uh, uh, inspections of heavy duty vehicles. Uh, but as, as we've shared with this group before, uh, CARB is the, the regulating authority over heavy duty trucks. So we would be collaborating closely with CARB on this. Um. Uh, in essence, that's, that's the, the spirit of this, um, of the strategy. And again, looking at, uh, some metrics for success, obviously would be securing funding opportunities to make sure that we can implement this and increase, uh, the number of inspections. Um, again, increasing the number of inspections itself, you know, that would be a, an important uh, goal for us to identify for this particular strategy. Um, and looking at, um, at initial numbers, I think would also be something that we can go back to, uh, to kind of provide that, that, um, baseline for us to see, you know, how we're doing right now, what's, what's happening right now and then be, um, you know, have a, a, a more informed, I guess, goal, uh, for, uh, twenty twenty eight. Uh, but are there any, any thoughts for any additional metrics that folks would like to see as part of this or anything that we might be missing? Uh, or any ideas for, for numbers, uh, or, or the language that we have right here? And again, something that folks, uh, can come back to, um, and make comments as you, you know, think about any new things that you would like to see captured here or any, any sort of suggestions. We certainly welcome that.
Domingo, I would, I would just also add to, um, this is something, this particular strategy too, is something that, that, um, CARB is still looking at, um, and so this might evolve a little bit more as we continue those conversations with CARB in terms of, you know, the best potential pathways forward to essentially get at the goal of, of having more mo-, you know, mobile monitoring um, at the border, however that looks like. Um, and so this, this particular set of actions and metrics will, you know, will most likely evolve, right? As those discussions continue with, with CARB.
All right. And I'm looking at a comment on the chat. Uh, it's kind of challenging to read the small uh, print right now. So I'm trying to zoom in, uh, on both documents without losing too much of the screen here, but, um, I'll just, uh, read, you know, some of the actions again, identifying funding opportunities. I'll just read, you know, some of the actions again, identifying funding opportunities to increase APCD compliance capacity for mobile source inspections. Explore opportunities for CARB to conduct mobile source inspections in Oti Mesa. Coordinate with the California Border Patrol to increase inspections of heavy duty trucks in Oti Mesa to ensure they are in compliance. Partner with CARB to increase frequency of mobile source inspections through remote sensing technologies that measure emissions of heavy duty vehicles and send tickets if over the CARB threshold. So some of the metrics that we're looking at here is, you know, securing those funding opportunities, increasing the number of mobile inspections, securing implementing remote sensing technologies, and providing updates to to this steering committee regarding progress on an annual basis. And so those are some of the the things that we're looking at here. And right now, just for folks on the English version, we're on page 15, on the Spanish version, we're on page 16. But we're about to move to the next one. So bear with me here as I scroll, hopefully I'm not making you all dizzy with two scrolling documents at the same time. The next strategy that we're looking at is under the other sources category, strategy number five, that's page 17. If you're following along on the English document, on the Spanish one would be on page 19. And so here, the strategy that we're looking at is identify opportunities to reduce dust from roadways and minimize exposure. And Monique, you have your hand up if you would like to make a comment.
I just wanted to, before maybe moving on to this one, point at Jenny's comment in the chat box. She was asking if we could come, excuse me, comment on how effective APCD thinks increasing heavy duty truck compliance will be. And so maybe Jenny, I don't know if you want to maybe just describe your question a little bit more. Are you there Jenny? Would you be able to kind of walk us through your question a little bit more? Okay, yeah, Domingo.
Yes, so.
No worries, no worries.
Okay, I guess, so from Jenny, we have, I guess, thinking of of the metric to increase by a percent. So if I understand correctly, Jenny, you're you're looking at perhaps, again, a good baseline to see what would be some good goal for us included to increase as a as a percentage of that baseline, if I'm understanding correctly. Okay, great. And so that's that's information that we can certainly ask internally from our colleagues in compliance. And so we're looking at I'm going to go back to make a quick comment, make a comment here for the number of inspections. Whoops. I don't know why this document moved over here, but. My computer is not like not letting me make comments, but I don't know, Monique, if you're able to make comments. If you want to add a comment there just to look at what our baseline is for current number of inspections.
For sure, I'll I'll add that right now.
Thank you. And so on this strategy number five, again, identifying opportunities to reduce dust from roadways and minimize exposure. We're looking at the at the metrics. We, one, one of the of the of the elements that's important for us here is to learn from the from the community about impacts from dust. So being able to share our compliance line and, you know, the different channels that we have available for folks to to submit their their complaints about dust. And so we're looking here at number of homes adjacent to the area of concern that have received information about the air quality complaint program. So we want to want to have like a percentage there, maybe 100% of the homes adjacent to the area of concern have received our information. Same here in terms of of homeowners who have received incentives to help them weatherize their home to help mitigate some of those impacts. So I don't know if there if there are any comments or questions about this particular strategy and metrics, or are any additional metrics that anyone would like to see as part of this strategy? And again, just inviting folks to provide any any input as it comes to you. No pressure for right now, you have the ability to provide comments and we'll make sure that, you know, we follow up with a larger group with the link to this to this document so that everybody who's who's attending tonight and who's also not able to, who was not able to be here with us tonight has access to the documents and the ability to provide any any comments or suggestions. And so moving on to strategy number six. My apologies, as I try to navigate this document here without. Here, we're talking about identifying opportunities to reduce dust from construction activities. The previous strategy focused on dust from mobile sources. For example, the ATVs that we heard about from, you know, CBP, etc. This one focuses on dust from construction activities. And so here again, we would love to hear your input about potential metrics. We, right now, we have measurable reduction in dust being caused by construction activities. And then we have annually for the next five years, table at X number of community events, provide X amount of community workshops and trainings. You know, post a number of times in place-based social media. And so what would be some of those goals that folks would like to see for this?
Domingo, I just wanted to jump in here. This one is pretty much the same thing as the one that we mentioned before. And so we could certainly integrate the same comments from the one before or even or even just take it out here, maybe because it is redundant and it is serving the same purpose in a way, so to speak. But maybe we could add more detail to the one above is like specifically focusing in neighborhoods that are experiencing dust from construction activities or something like that that we might be able to to add specifically instead of having it in in both places. I'm just kind of thinking out loud now, just just because having like seeing it as part of the same conversation.
Yes, and and I'm sorry, Monique, I'm trying to click on it, but it's not letting me. I don't know if you're if you have the ability to make the comment because I it's not letting me make it here.
Yeah, I'll I'll add the notes to this one for sure, but love to also hear other folks' thoughts too on that.
We have, we have a quiet group tonight. I know it's a lot of information for sure, so it's 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 tough, but again, we really appreciate you being here for the for the discussion as as we walk you through the the strategies. So if at any point you want to come back to this, we can certainly do that. So let's go ahead and move to the next one. And we're approaching the end of the of the document here, so just bear with us. So for this one in particular, we're looking at cross border strategy number two. We're on page 20 on the English document and we are on page 22 in the Spanish, if you're following on your own with the documents. This one talks about conducting monitoring along the Tijuana River Valley to understand health impacts and mitigation efforts. As I shared today, we have a an important development in that already in that we were able to deploy our first sensor in our San Isidro monitoring station. But we would like to hear any any ideas or comments that you might have in terms of the metrics. For this one in particular, we would like to partner with a university to perform our quality study on toxin toxins and pollution coming from environmental orders in the Tijuana River. We, as an air agency, we have the ability to collect, you know, the the inform, collect data from odor causing compounds. But we would certainly need a partner that could help us with the potential study on what those toxins and pollution mean in terms of of public health impacts within the in the community. And so we're looking at at a at a potential partnership. And part of the metrics that we have here are identifying a university partner, also locating a number of monitors in the Tijuana River Valley. I think, Monique, if I remember correctly, we might have a number like that already in the camp. I might be mistaken, I'm not sure, but.
Yes, I think that was more of a placeholder for us to go back and reference. Yeah, so it's not necessarily for this group to necessarily say, hey, we need 10, but I think it's folks already chimed in on that.
Okay, perfect.
The camp.
I just saw it side highlighted on the Spanish version, but nothing, so I thought we want we wanted to stop here. But good, so we can move on from this one then. Oh, that was the end, look at that. I don't know if there are any any other comments or questions, just in general, it doesn't have to be necessarily focused on any of the particular strategies that we that we focused on today. If you have any questions or comments or suggestions for any of the other strategies that we didn't mention tonight. Again, we wanted to make sure that we focused on some of the more relevance based on our previous discussions so that we can make a better use of our time tonight because we know we have very limited time with you all. So we still have about 13 minutes left in our meeting time tonight. So if anybody has any any questions or comments that they would like to bring up to us, that would be we'd be happy to to hear you out. And and perhaps I'll stop sharing my screen right now, and I can always pull this up again if need be. We shared a lot of information with you tonight, so thank you for bearing with us. I know this these exercises can be quite tedious, but you know, this is this is really the meat of the of the plan. And 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 we really want to make sure that we're walking you through everything that we're including and that we've co-developed as a as a group, as a team. So that everybody has an opportunity to to become familiar with what, you know, what you will be voting on later on, and then what our board is going to be approving for your community as well for us to implement. Any any comments or questions? And as as you think about that, again, as a reminder, we'll, you know, Monique will share the link with the broader group so that those folks who were not able to be with us tonight also have the ability to provide any comments on the documents. We already heard from some agencies who are looking to do that, so we certainly welcome your input in that way as well.
Yeah, and and with that too, in addition to the link, I'll I'll also send out the the recording of our conversation today too. So folks can also use that to, you know, as they want to provide comments as well. And I'll send that out before the end of the day tomorrow. Both the link the to the documents and then a link to to on our YouTube page where this recording will be uploaded as well.
Jose, I see your hand up.
Yes, on the metrics, I know that it's going to be a little for some of these strategies, going to be tough to determine some metrics. Can we propose qualitative? Not just quantitative metrics?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, we're not limited to any particular type of metric. So if there's a metric that's not quantitative but more qualitative, like you said, feel free to give us any suggestions, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. Any any other comments or questions? We also don't want to keep you more than more than needed. We we know that you're already giving us, you know, being being very generous with your time, but we want to make sure that, you know, you have the opportunity to ask any questions or make any comments. Monique, any any last comments or thoughts from your end?
I just want to say thank you for being here tonight. The comments that were shared, like certainly were really amazing and really appreciate what everyone has shared already so far, and it's just making these strategies strategies better. But again, this is not the only time that you'll have an opportunity to comment specifically on these strategies. If if, again, just let you all know, like, our door is open. If you want to, you know, have a one-on-one conversation with us too, we're we're open to schedule that with folks as well to get to get folks feedback as well.
Thank you, Monique. So with that, same, I just want to echo Monique Monique's words of appreciation for your participation. Again, you are a co-author with us of, you know, this of this document, we're developing this together. So this is also your work product. So I I, you know, as you can see, we've done a lot of work here. So thank you so much for your continued engagement, and we certainly look forward to continue our discussions and our meetings. And we're making good progress, again, celebrating our our deployment of our first sensor for the orders in the TJ River Valley. And just like that accomplishment will have mu- many more to come. So thank you very much for being part of this and for your time tonight, and we'll see you at our next meeting. Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.